Good evening, folks. It's five thirty Tuesday, August fifteenth. I call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Jacob?
There.
Councilmember Les Goher?
Here.
Councilmember Schultz?
Here.
President Johnson?
Here.
Thank you.
Item number three, presentation and discussion of proposed amendments to section ninety-four dash four thirty-two of the cities of Fort Atkinson's municipal code and sections fifteen point oh three point two eight, fifteen point oh six point oh six, twelve, and fifteen point oh six oh six nineteen, fifteen point oh six oh six twenty-one, and fifteen point oh six oh six twenty-two of the city of Fort Atkinson zoning ordinance relating to parking restrictions on public rights of way and on privately owned residential property.
We have our building inspector and zoning administrator administrator Jed Trigger here to present some information on these draft ordinances.
Okay, you'll notice they look a little different than they did before. I think that comes from suggestions, ideas coming from multiple places and we, as a staff, took another look at these and I don't know if we could accomplish. Some of the things that I think were were issues as well as with accommodating some other things that we may have overlooked. So anyway, section one here is the home occupation accessory land uses. We put one little bit back to where it was that we'd be beginning, no longer with the one vehicle limit. But you will notice in there that we did strike out the allowed parking on adjacent residential streets. And I think you'll see that coming up in the municipal code ninety-four dash four thirty-two. Those changes kind of came as a result because those things coincide with each other. Section two fifteen oh six oh six twelve, three C I. That is also, we put back where there would be allowed for parking on gravel in the rear yard for a utility trailer or something along those lines, provided that it is screened per section fifteen oh six oh six nine. Section three fifteen oh six oh six nineteen. This is for traffic circulation areas outside of the right of way. This is making some exceptions here. One thing that was brought up is some blacktop on residential, residential properties, one or two family is typical for three inches. So what we had in there before was four, and we've gone to three, which would be typical for residential. And then also down in there is just some wording on replacement approaches and new approaches, meeting the requirements that are currently in there. Section four fifteen oh six oh six twenty-one, this took quite a bit of a change from our previous proposal. Basically, we reverted back to what has already been in there and made some slight alterations in there, allowing for semi-tractors. Basically, what's in here is not typically allowed in a residential district. So instead of making some more confusing language in there, we pulled those things back out and left it as is and just put in there a foot requirement. And then with the semi-trailers and tractors, we struck the tractors out of there so somebody would be allowed to park their tractor, not the trailer, but semi-tractor on their personal property.
So if I may just ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
The vernacular might be a little lost on me, but we're talking, it would not involve what they're hauling.
Correct. It's just the truck at the beginning. Yep.
The truck. Okay.
And then section five. This is something that we added in as another proposal for an amendment. This is allowing for a greater amount of weight for a commercial vehicle on the residential property. This is an easement of the rules. And then I'll go over to section ninety-four four thirty-two. This comes, as like I said, it coincides with that first section that doesn't allow trailers on the street with a home occupation permit. This is basically as down towards E that's striking those words out of the municipal code. They would be conflicting if they were left. Section D up above, that is an added in to clarify what some clarify where vehicles should be or trailers should be parked on the street or whether or not they can be. I guess I'd be open for questions on any one of these or all.
You spoke of things being allowed to be parked in the backyard on gravel. Are that the newly installed gravel or existing gravel?
If something is a legal parking space, so gravel has been in there for utility trailers in the past. So if it is a current parking space, this is not retroactive for those legal parking spaces that were already there. So this would not change something that was already allowed before this.
The future does not allow gravel, correct?
We actually did back in years, we put the gravel, allowing for gravel to be in the rear yard with screening requirements.
Are there more restrictions on it than that? I mean, I understood that you'd have to have it screened.
That was already there, parking in the rear inside yard already does require screening in the previous or in the current version.
Describe screening for us.
Screening, Brad, as an example, if you had a utility trailer and you're parking it in your backyard and you were putting it there, you would have to put a, it says a minimum of five feet, privacy fence, solid fence, or dense shrubbery or something like that, so that your neighbor, who may have a different opinion of it being back there, doesn't have to look at it.
Okay, those things can all get a permit through you?
Correct. Yep, actually fencing that's less sixteen feet or less does not require a permit.
Okay. Driveways are typically considered to be paved. There's not very many gravel driveways left in town.
We actually currently don't allow for that. This is just clarifying those things.
But if you wanted to widen your driveway, what's your restrictions?
Widening, it's twenty-four feet at the right of way. And then it depends on where, if it's leading up to an attached garage or an accessory building, there's lots of different variables in there. But those are outside of what we're changing, but those things are available in our ordinances.
I just foresee people wanting to say, okay, I'm gonna have to add a parking spot and we're, and they could come visit you and you could help them set up.
Absolutely, yes.
If it qualified in.
Yeah, so there's lots of different variables in there. If they have a corner lot where it's a street-facing side lot, then parking restrictions are there in our current ordinances. But I would definitely be able to assist on where parking would be available for them in those situations, yes.
Thank you.
Jed, I had a question kind of raised by a comment we got from a resident at the last meeting and she submitted a photo where a camping trailer was parked on the street and there was actually a slide out crowd like into the street, obviously unsafe situation. I didn't see where something like that was maybe directly addressed in here, is it?
That's, that's already would not be, it wasn't attached to a vehicle in that situation.
Okay.
And they cannot use that bump out into the street.
Okay.
Yep, that that already is would not be.
It's already spelled out in ordinance.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah, that is detached. It's not a motor vehicle, so it's a detached trailer, which already is not allowed in there or allowed in parking by itself on the street.
Okay.
I also understood the way this works is there would be some things allowed to be parked on a street, a trailer or whatever. But on the, on the instance that it's causing a problem for the neighborhood, a a neighbor can't see what's oncoming traffic, so it makes a danger that that one would would meet a requirement of getting off moved.
Yes, that is addressed in that that section E, I believe, up there, D rather. Yeah, if it's causing a hazard or or something like that, then it would have to be moved, yes. In there is a allowance for a person to temporarily, well, already in our parking trailers temporarily, you can do it if you're moving things around your driveway, that's one situation. But for overnight parking or things along those lines, one vehicle and trailer attachment per, and it has to be adjacent to your home. So you can't park it across town and and call it your one vehicle.
The things you are allowed to park in your driveway, is there a discrepancy between personal and business things? I mean, versus what you can put in there is just the requirement being it's your property, but it's not one of the things like a bulldozer or caterpillar or something like.
Correct, yeah, those would not be typical for residential property, so wouldn't, wouldn't be allowed per our core current ordinances. But yeah, lifting that one, I don't know if you're, if you're referring to the, the home occupation, single trailer or not, that would fall, that only determines trailer parking for something that would be acceptable as a home occupation. We are not restricting other personal trailers other than the parking on the street situation where they are allowed to park their trailers on their residential property and an approved parking space.
Okay, and the number of spaces you're allowed to park in your driveway are determined by?
That is also in a zoning ordinance, a single family is required to have two parking spaces.
But they're allowed to have more than two?
They can have more. There is no limit on a residential parking spaces quantity.
Depending on your driveway width and size?
Correct, yeah, there's other parameters there, yes, but.
Or whether or not you go around the side of the garage, all determined how many parking spaces.
Correct. Yep. They can be stacked, your, your car, your garage counts as a parking space as well. It doesn't necessarily have to be outside the garage.
So one question I have regarding the section D there. It says, you know, the vehicle has to be owned or rented by the owner of the property or renter. But how does that apply to, I know we have several people in town that work for a larger company, have like a F three fifty service truck and will pull a trailer home at night. They don't have the room to back it in their driveway. But can they still use that parking stalls in their?
They live there.
The road?
Okay, yeah, if they live there and that's their vehicle and trailer, that'd be their one combination trailer, as long as it's attached to the vehicle, yeah.
Okay. Because it, you know, it doesn't qualify under that as, that's their own vehicle or they don't own that vehicle, it is a company vehicle beyond.
Correct.
So just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, and I think just to to clarify, the intent is just that it's one, one combination. And the, the reason we just had owner or renter was so that we weren't in a position where somebody is running a business that that maybe isn't appropriate for that residential area and has four or five sets of trucks and trailers. And somebody says, well, I own one of these and somebody else who lives over there owns this one and and trying to get around those those types of things. So the intent is really just to allow for one combination.
Okay.
I've got one, I just want to say thank you for making some changes to this. I think as, as a city, you know, city leadership, we have to balance a couple of things. One of them is, you know, how being as business friendly as we can. Additionally, though, as, as people have given us some feedback about what they can or can't do in their residential neighborhood with commercial vehicles, we have to remember it's, it's in the name residential neighborhood. However, I do appreciate some of the allowances that we've made in here. The next one I have is just a small question. I think I already know the answer, but I just want to have it discussed. We tend to shy away from the use of gravel and just so for understanding, the reason for that is because of, you know, runoff that could get into the waterway and as a city that we have to manage the sediment that flows into the local water streams, correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and that's the reason for that not being attached to your driveway, so it would have to be separated by lawn or something, it can't be a part of your actual driveway, or then it would have to be paved.
Thank you.
Jed, just out of curiosity and tying off that, if somebody, I know there are a few that that do have a gravel driveway still in the city. Is that a situation where it's just kind of grandfathered in until they would?
If, if it was in place before the ordinance is changed to, to paving requirements, then it cannot be, I mean, they can keep it the same until they were to expand or or change the driveway itself, then it would have to fall underneath their current ordinances.
Got it. Okay.
Yep, I have a question. How do we know, like, let's just say we drive around and we see a gravel driveway a year from today, right? How do we know that that one is grandfathered in versus, you know, like, is there a record of? Like, how, how do we prove what is grandfathered in or not?
Currently, the easiest way, if you, if you really wanted to find out, would be Google Maps, which has, has a pretty good timeline on that. But unless it's causing a problem, nobody's really looking for it. But if, if you wanted to, that's currently one of the easiest ways of finding out because we don't require a permit for a new driveway, or I shouldn't say for a new driveway, for your driveway to be replaced or to to revamp it. But I can understand your, those situations do come up or you don't really know.
Yeah, I know there's going to be a savvy individual.
Yeah, well, like I said, we're not, we're not really out there looking for, this would come into play on, on new applications in most, in most cases.
Andy, could you provide a little clarity, just the difference between the driveway and the approach that's in the public right of way? I just want to make sure that that's clear for everybody.
Yeah, the, the, the public right of way is mostly identified by the back of the sidewalk. So it's kind of a corridor with the sidewalk and the sidewalk is the boundary. Within that corridor is the public right of way, and so that portion of the driveway that is in the public right of way has requirements for the width, minimum or maximum width, that it can be some requirements for slope thickness of the slab, things of that nature, we control that. Once you get on the private property, then there's some zoning regulations that come into play there with respect to the overall amount of impervious surface on the residential lot. But there isn't any requirements as to how wide the driveway can be.
So the approach, though, does have to be paved.
It does have to be.
And, and that's something that would be retroactive if there are approaches now that are not paved.
Correct.
We would be working on those.
Yes, we do have, we do have a few approaches in the city that that are not paved, that will be, we've been managing.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that the difference, the difference between the approach, which is in the right of way, and then the driveway that's on private property.
Yeah, she is correct. Yeah, I was referring to the private side of your driveway, yes.
Andy, and as you, you spoke about the difference being what side of the sidewalk you're on. But on areas where we maybe have a cul-de-sac or other areas where there are no sidewalks, the right of way still exists.
It does.
And so you, whether you like it or not, you've got to park far enough inside your driveway, you're out of the right of way?
Technically, yes. We enforce that generally when it becomes a problem and we have sidewalk there. If there isn't sidewalk where pedestrians are, are driving, I would say that we, we don't enforce that because there isn't a conflict there with pedestrians. But in a full legal sense, yes, you shouldn't be parking in the right of way.
They're at a point where they're breaking out into the street, they'll be stopped from that, yes.
Correct, yeah.
I wanted to follow up to, on the same commenter that Councilman Becker was speaking of earlier, we had somebody who said, who came and asked us to create an ordinance to prevent large trucks and trailers from parking, parking on the street. And everybody's probably got a different definition of what a large truck is. So if I was to try to explain to a layperson what, if it's not one of these identified types of vehicles, is, is it wise for me to say that's, if it's not on this list, if it's less than twenty-one feet, it's not considered a large truck?
Yeah, there, there's some weight requirements there. I mean, generally, as we all know, trucks and cars come in a variety of different sizes and some of those, yeah, it's, it's hard to tell on some of those. But generally, a three-quarter or a one-ton truck or smaller pickup truck would be the type of vehicle that would be appropriate for, for parking on the street for residential use. When you, go ahead, oh yeah, if you step outside of it, then you should be parking on your private property for vehicles that larger than that, up to the twenty-eight thousand pounds and twenty-one feet. And then, then it shouldn't be in the residential neighborhood because of size and weight.
Yeah, just for clarification, you're, I, I believe you're looking at section four in the zoning ordinance. I, I just wanted to clarify that is for private property. So with the zoning ordinance, I think the, a good way to kind of think about this is that the zoning ordinance typically regulates, you know, privately owned property. And then some of the general ordinances regulate more of the parking in the right of, in the rights of way. So what, what you're referring to, I think, was somebody who asked about that ordinance for parking on the street. So that would actually be addressed under that section ninety-four dash four thirty-two sub D. So that's that truck and trailer parking. So that does allow for one truck and trailer combination, but it also includes some language relating to the location of such must be able to be, to safely accommodate the specified trailer and, and vehicle parked without causing any safety concerns, view obstructions or other roadway obstructions. So it would, if it was causing a safety concern, this would allow our police department to request or require that it be moved.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I will just add one thing in the parking restrictions. As we were reviewing that on a staff level, we did find one item on section ninety-four dash four thirty-four, which you don't have in front of you, but is in our quote of ordinances, that has to do with one spot outside of the municipal building that would used to be striped for taxi parking. If and when these ordinances move forward, we will come, that, that will be part of this ordinance package to repeal that small section. I just wanted to mention it. It's not being restriped as such. So I, I thought it appropriate that we repeal that, but that would be part of an ordinance that would come back to the council for the three readings. If and when the rest of this.
Was it being utilized when it was there?
It was not.
It was not. Jed, I want to say thank you for readdressing certain issues and bringing it back to a more happy medium.
I cannot take full credit for that, but I think as a staff, we worked, we worked hard on trying to figure out the right solution and still addressing issues that were encompassing.
I think this, this, and we have another ordinance yet to get to, but this is example of a good exercise. We're having a good public discussion and the city council has taken and weighed some of that, that public input from both people who were for and against certain provisions in the proposal. So I think it's been a really good exercise.
And I want to thank Rebecca for getting us a meeting where we can just get clear the air and get all on the same page.
Yeah. Absolutely, yeah. Okay, any further questions?
Okay, we will, because, because the zoning part of these ordinances, the part that has to do with the zoning code has changed substantially since the last time the, the plan commission took a look at it. If you recall, this was part of a larger package that the plan commission reviewed a couple of months ago and did recommend approval. So we will take back those zoning pieces to the plan commission for review at an upcoming meeting, and then they will come back to the city council after plan commission takes another look. So they won't be on, you know, they won't right be on the September city council meeting right away, but they will be coming, coming back.
Right, thank you.
It's just workshop, so we don't need any sort of action item. But President Johnson, you can move on to the next one if you'd like to.
We're gonna move on to talking about ATV, all-terrain vehicles and UTVs on the city streets. I have invited a special speaker, a guest to be called our key person, or at least my key person, is the knowledge on the ATV world and others, and other ordinances in other cities and how it's been functioning and, and, and where it stands all the way around. Feel free to ask him questions as he will be glad to answer them for us. John, you want to come up and give us a little presentation and let us question you to death? Please tell us what your credentials are.
Well, first of all, thank you for inviting me. I'm John Drake. I'm the president of the Jefferson Half Mile ATV Club. I've been in the last five years or since March of twenty twenty, been very active in every Jefferson County community there is getting ATV ordinances passed. I do have a little packet I'd like to hand out to everybody, if that's okay, just with some information on it. Is that all right or not?
Oh, yeah, sure, you can.
And it's, it's all for you just to read it at your pleasure. It's nothing. I shouldn't say it's not nothing, it's a lot of information, so.
Thank you. Thanks.
So when Governor Evers signed a law into effect in March fourth of twenty twenty, he effectively changed the rules for ATV and UTV in the state of Wisconsin. Basically, twenty-three point three three opens up, gives, gives the local municipality the power to write ordinances to open roads that they're becking will in an ordinance any way they want. There are certain regulations. First of all, you have to be, you have to have a driver's license. Sixteen to eighteen-year-olds must wear helmets. You must carry a certificate of insurance in your vehicle with you, just like you do when you're driving a car. They have to have seat belts, headlights, taillights, turn signals, they, in the, in the state statute, they call motorcycle turn signals, which are hand signals. Although today, a lot of people that are buying new machines or ordering them or buying them with turn signals, you can put them on aftermarket, they're very easy. So riding on a, riding on a county, county highway or city street, if there's a white fog line, you must ride to the left of the white fog line. You cannot ride to the right of it. You cannot ride in the gravel. Speed limits are set up in each municipality by the ordinance. Jefferson County's ordinance is posted speed limits on any county highway that's fifty-five, you can ride fifty-five. It's forty-five, you can ride forty-five. There is a part of twenty-three point three three that gives local municipalities the authority to approve state highways that run through their municipality at thirty-five miles an hour or less. Over thirty-five miles an hour, you must fill out a form with the state and get state approval. So and our, our club has been around since two thousand and four. We have, currently have a hundred and twenty members. And what we do is when we go into a municipality, talk about road riding, the first thing that, usually the first thing I talk about is municipalities don't have the budget to pay for the signage. We pipe, we, we will come into Fort Atkinson and we'll partner with Kashkana Cruisers and we'll pay for the signage. So we've done that in every municipality we've gone in. We either have the county install it and bill the municipality and we write a check out to the municipality because we can't pay the county direct. But we do, we do one fundraiser a year just for paying for signage. And we've allotted twenty-five hundred dollars to the Fort Atkinson signs. And that's in partnership, well, I don't know what Kashkana Cruisers is allotted, but so, and if we need more, we can take it back to the club and vote on more. So I'd be open for questions.
Would you speak as far as, with your opinion of the economic value or that might come to the city through this?
There is a positive economic value. The problem with that is there's no data to show it. But if you talk to any business owner, gas station, restaurant, bar, they will tell you that there's an economic value to it. It might not be huge, but there is a value. It's bringing people into the municipality and they spend money, whether they go to Festival Foods or Big Bar or any, any local establishment for food and drink. The, there is a positive economic value. The, the last municipality that we got open for ATVs was Johnson Creek. And I talked about the economic value being positive and they found that out in the first month. The business owners are writing emails saying, yeah, this is great, glad we did it, so.
I'd also like to point out a economic value to the community that your club was involved in a donation to the hassle from mammograms for a sizable amount of money.
Correct. What, we have, we have what we call Ride for the Racks. It's usually the first, second week of October, every year, and October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And last year, we donated thirty thousand six hundred dollars to the Ford Healthcare Mammogram Voucher Program. That, and that was our fifth year for doing that fundraiser. And for previous years, we didn't even raise thirty thousand dollars to donate collectively. This year, our goal is fifty thousand dollars. Ford Healthcare has opened that up, not just from mammogram vouchers, but to biopsies and a couple of other things. Last year, when we, when we had our check presentation, we heard a story of a, of a young lady that went in. Then she used a voucher and she had stage four breast cancer. So basically, we saved her life by that donation. And that ride this year is October seventh. And that ride this year is October seventh. We will. I'm guessing last year we had a hundred and ten machines. It's a poker run, so you have to get a card stamped. It costs money to get in. We have this year so far, I know that we have over ten thousand dollars just in donations. The company I work for just donated thirty-five hundred. So it's it's a huge event. We have no issues whatsoever. Last year, we had no issues, no citations. Nobody got in accidents. It's a very well-run event. The girls in our club that run it, I should say ladies in our club that run it do an awesome job. We'd love to have Fort Atkinson as part of that because we can go all around for it, but we can't come into Fort. And one, one other thing while it's on my mind about coming into Fort. I just want to speak to the hours that are in this proposed ordinance. Those hours should match the county hours from five AM to ten PM at night, because what that's going to do from nine to dusk is that's going to confuse people. It's going to cause more issues for law enforcement. Because people won't understand the rules and regulations of riding in Fort Atkinson.
Can I ask you about the hours? Now, those differ though. I I counted, I counted thirteen municipalities that you reviewed in your handout. So if there's, if there's thirteen towns and villages, I think that most of them are different, aren't they? For instance, when I reviewed Jefferson, Jefferson has a restriction from
eight AM to ten PM.
Yeah, and then the other one that I reviewed, what ten PM at night till eight, right?
Right.
And Whitewater, yeah, it has another restriction. So are all different time periods throughout these thirteen?
They're, they're all very similar. I mean, it, the Jefferson, I'll speak to Jefferson for a moment. Our sunset, our sunset clause, the city of Jefferson, yes, our sunset clause with the city of Jefferson is coming up in October. That'll be the second six-month sunset that we've had with them. At the last council meeting, you might remember Nate giving a report from an email at the lieutenant sent us that they've only had a couple of issues, period. That will be on that ordinance to change the hours from closed at ten PM to open at five AM. So essentially, it'll be five AM in the morning until ten PM at night. And we have to change our signage. We have certain things that we have to do, but that is, that is up and coming within the next two months. We're ten months into our Jefferson ordinance.
Does that be the standard, ten to five?
Ten to, yep, ten to five would be the standard. There is another municipality that goes to eleven, but for the most part, everybody is ten to five. I'm not sure on Whitewater's, to be honest with you, I.
It's ten to five.
Is it ten to five? Okay. So that'll be up and coming in the next month or so with City of Jefferson.
John, I would say that there's a lot of people with concerns about the people driving UTVs and and how they might or might not behave. Can you, can you address that a little bit with what the average age of the UTV, UTV drivers today are?
Sure. The average age of people purchasing units and driving UTVs and ATVs is forty-five to sixty. These machines are not cheap. If if you happen to drive by Rob's, stop in and look at what's called a Defender. It's something like what I have. I mean, I spent thirty thousand dollars for my machine three years ago. You can get them any which way you want. You can get them with heat, air conditioning, plows, I, you can order anything you want. The price just keeps going up.
Who collects the data on the ages of the people who buy them?
Talking with the dealers, that's where I get, got my information. And and actually, we had an event that Rob's on April first, we invited the whole village of Johnson Creek. Every voting member of Johnson Creek got a letter from our ATV club inviting, inviting them to this educational session. Because education is by far probably the biggest hindrance in ATV, UTV world. Most people think, oh, there can be these young kids riding up and down the roads and we had two educational sessions that day, and Rob actually came out and spoke, and he was, look at everybody sitting in this room. Look at the color of their hair. That tells a story right there. So, you know, I I get my information from the local dealers.
Thank you.
I believe in Johnson's Creek, they have a limit of twenty-five machines on a ride without asking permission to bring in a larger group. Is that correct?
Jefferson.
Jefferson.
If there, if there's a, if there's a group coming in town of twenty-five or more machines, they have to contact the police department. Let them know what time they're going to be coming into town and certain details. And what they'll do is they'll ask the group to kind of break up, don't ride twenty-five machines in a line, try to do five or ten. But that that has worked very well according to Jefferson PD. I keep in regular touch with the lieutenant in charge of the the ATV, UTV group, the one that has the machine that rides around on it. And I talk to Chief Richter quite often just to make sure that we don't have any issues.
Does your packet include the letter from the Jefferson mayor that you handed out to the team?
From Dale Opperman, that is in there.
Could you briefly explain to the audience what's in that letter?
Basically, he just, he wrote a letter saying that they've had very few, if any, issues, and he supports it fully and he's glad, I think he said in there, he's glad he supports it.
Are, are, are you in tune with more than the Jefferson County area of Northwood stuff?
No, the Northwood stuff is a little bit different than what we do. The public trails are just what they are. They're public trails. We're, we're talking road routes here. So there is a difference. A twelve-year-old can ride a machine on a public trail if they have the DNR safety course, and if they have a parent along on another machine. In with the road routes, twelve-year-olds can't ride to school. They're not allowed. It's got, you have to have a driver's license, be sixteen, wear a helmet if you're sixteen to eighteen, seat belts, all the normal safety stuff.
Passengers under eighteen also need a helmet, yes.
Yep, anybody in or on the machine under eighteen has to wear a helmet.
Are there restrictions on the ages of passengers? I mean, can, can young kids go on them? Are there car seats that are in the UTVs? Are there restrictions on who can ride, you know, in front of an adult on an ATV on the roads? Or would those things need to be included in a local ordinance?
Well, fir- first of all, I'll, I'll address the ATV. ATVs have to be manufactured from manufacturer for two people. That just came about two years ago. Prior to that, you could have someone sit behind you and hold on or put someone in front of you. Now it's got to be manufactured for two people, otherwise it's illegal to ride on the roads. As far as child seats and UTVs, I've, I've seen a lot of, a lot of talk back and forth about what child seats to put in them and and, you know, if you use a bumper or if you use a child seat. But really, that's up to the parent. Personally, myself, I wouldn't ride around with my four-year-old in a UTV, but, you know, a parent can do that. There is no law that says they can't.
Other than the helmet required.
Other than the helmet requirement, yes. And seat belts if they don't put them in a child seat.
Well, question about the helmets. That was one thing I, I had recalled previously. There are requirements for the type of helmet, aren't there? Like, I remember seeing at our last presentation, you can't just put on a bike helmet, like a bicycle helmet has to be like a proper. I, I, maybe you can explain more.
DOT approved, basically a DOT, DOT approved motorcycle helmet.
Okay.
Now, full face would be preferred. You can wear three-quarter face as long as it's DOT approved and it has a DOT sticker on the back of the helmet.
Are you aware of buyer's remorse anywhere in Jefferson County from the, I mean, basically the majority or near all except us have ordinances allowing this? Is there buyer's remorse going on anywhere where they're going, woe is us? What were we thinking?
No, not at all. In fact, some of the, some of the municipalities that had limitations on road routes have opened them up the rest of the way. I, Town of Koshkano was one. Dean is sitting right here, the president of their club, but I believe last month at their meeting, they opened some roads that they have closed, so the whole township's open. There's only one road restricted in City of Jefferson, and that's North Water Town, Business Twenty-Six coming into town. And that was by my request because we could go down North Water Town and we could go down Dewey Road, so we had other, other options to get around that particular stretch of road. And may I add one other thing, speaking of the city of Jefferson. Mayor Dale requested an ad hoc committee be formed to write the ordinance. So was the chief of police, his right-hand lieutenant, the chief of the Department of Public Works, one, one public works employee and myself. There was five of us on the ad hoc committee. We met three times. It took us three meetings to iron out and hammer out an ordinance for the city of Jefferson before I went to the city council.
I have a question. If you, you had said that the law says sixteen and over they can drive. But the most recent information I got, we got from the DNR forum that came to present shows that ages twelve to fifteen can, but they have to be accompanied by an adult. Was that changed recently or where did you just misspeak on that?
No, that, that is, that is out there, but I, I don't see anybody doing it. I haven't heard of anybody doing it. And personally, I believe that's more for northern Wisconsin, for the, for the trails, for the public trails.
So you're just indicating most city ordinances that are being adopted are saying they got a sixteen-year-old.
Right, it, it, that has to be listed in ordinance. I mean, if, if an ordinance is written, it's got to show specific to twenty-three point three three, not to the DNR ordinance, but to the state statute.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Drake, how would you respond to someone who takes the position that ATVs are intended for off-road use? And I, I think the chief mentioned it at the ordinance committee meeting, and I was doing some follow-up research on it on the ATV Safety Institute's website that says never ride on paved roads. What, what, how do you respond to that?
Well, the the, the, the rules for tires changed here a while back. Tires used to be a big issue for riding on the roads. Now you can run any kind of tire you want on a machine. I personally run a road and trail tire on mine. A lot of people run car tires, fourteen-inch, thirteen-inch car tires. The day of the low-pressure tire and not riding on the road, that's pretty much gone. There's many states around us that allow this also. I mean, to me, it's just like going to McDonald's and they put a sticker on their coffee cup, caution hot coffee. You know, you're pouring hot coffee. When you get it, you take a sip, you burn your tongue. You can't sue them because it says hot coffee.
But is it the tire alone that that makes even the ATV Safety Institute say that never ride it on a paved road, or is it the machine in total?
It's the tire. I believe it's the tire because the tires were the issue with the low profile, are the low air pressure tires. And there are, there are specific, there are specific size and weight applications for ATVs, and ATV cannot be over nine hundred pounds. And it cannot be more than fifty inches wide. A UTV cannot be any more than three thousand pounds and cannot be more than sixty-five inches wide, and that would be, should be in an ordinance also. That's all in twenty-three point three three.
And is it still true that ATVs and UTVs do not meet federal motor vehicle safety standards?
I think I'm, I think I'm more safer in my side-by-side or in my UTV than I am in a smart car.
Our own perceptions aside.
Right.
Is it still a true statement that they do not meet motor vehicle safety?
Yes, because there's no airbags. That would be the only difference. There is no airbags in a UTV or side-by-side.
Would they be safer than a motorcycle?
Absolutely. Last year, there was, and I'm going off the top of my head from some data I looked at yesterday. Last year, there was three hundred and seventy, three hundred and seventy-three thousand motorcycles registered in the state of Wisconsin. And there was a hundred and twenty deaths, and there was four hundred and ninety thousand ATVs and UTVs registered in the state, and there was twenty, twenty-seven deaths.
I saw a size statistic, and I don't remember on which of the paperwork that I got from you that talked about one in ten or basically ten percent of adults in the state are now currently owning UTVs or ATVs?
Yes. That, that is, that is a valid statistic. And I'll just take myself for an example. I sold my Harley Baker because I had some health issues. I didn't feel comfortable riding on a motorcycle that I owned for over twenty years, sold it three years ago. And I've been riding an ATV since two thousand and five. Well, I bought a UTV to replace my motorcycle, and at least now I can get out and get the same feeling I did on a motorcycle, except on four wheels.
But ba- back to another recommendation from the ATV Safety Institute that recommends riding only on designated trails. Can you enlighten me on what the status is of trails in and around this immediate area?
We as a club, Jefferson Half Mile ATV Club, we have a group of private trails that you have to be a club member to ride on. But those trails are also linked by road routes. We, back in two thousand and four, when the club started, we had certain trails and we went to the Town of Aslan, Town of Farmington, a couple of the townships, and we got approval to ride on certain stretches of roads to link from trail to trail that we couldn't get to. But we're the only club that I know of, well, I shouldn't say that, Hebron Knights has a, has a group of trails too, if you belong to their club. There's currently ninety TV clubs in Jefferson County, so I'm not sure all of them have private trails, but I know we do, and I know Hebron Knights does.
So in, in our immediate surrounding area, Fort Atkinson by our is what I mean. Where would the nearest trail be to link up with?
It would be by St. Clara's off of Y. You could start there and you could ride our whole trail network up to the ethanol plant and it's probably, there's probably five or six miles. It's not a lot, but it, at least you get out in the woods and can ride through the woods.
And then how about in other directions, southeast or west of our?
Hebron Knights, I believe they, their starts at the town hall over there someplace. I've never ridden on them, so I honestly can't answer that question. I don't know.
There's some in the Hebron area.
Are there public trails or private trails?
Private groups.
Private ruptures.
I think that, like a comment that was made, I believe during the ordinance committee is that, like, we, we don't have a public trail system. And I've been debating whether or not that's, that's a good or a bad thing. Getting to know your club just a little bit more over the past couple of months. Being, being a member that allows them that then access to those private trails. From what I've, you know, what I've learned about your club is that you do a lot of education, try to keep your members compliant with, with local laws. So I'm starting to think that actually not having public trails is in having the private trails that if they're a member of a club, that that actually probably helps protect the, or not maybe the word not protect, but I think the behavior of eight, of ATV, UTV drivers probably just much more compliant. Could you talk a little bit more about what you, what expectations you have of your club members?
Well, we're, actually, we run a pretty tight ship with our club members. To, to be a member of our club is thirty dollars first year for your machine and twenty dollars membership every year after that. It's not a lot of money. But we, we, we have flags. Every year, we change color of flags. So if we see a machine coming or going, we know whether they're a club member or not. And I want to say we self-police ourselves, not, not taking law enforcement into it. I mean, that's not what we do. We just, if someone says, hey, I saw so-and-so riding erratic, I talk to them or Nate will talk to them, somebody talks to them. But we, we do try to educate our club members. We have monthly meetings. And every meeting, I will talk a little bit about something different when it comes to education, but for, I want to say ninety-eight percent of our club members are very respectful of everything that we're doing, and that's the reason our club member to learn, to get educated.
A, a personal perspective to me, it's a chicken and the egg kind of story. Why would you have ATV trails if you can't ride ATVs?
Right.
Once the ATVs are allowed, trails will appear, is what I personally believe. I have attended a meeting with your club. It was incredibly well organized, well-run, and very responsible individuals taking what safety and good, good behavior very seriously. I was impressed with your club.
Thank you. We, we work hard at it.
There, there was some question at the ordinance committee meeting. I'm not an ordinance committee member, but I watched the recording of it twice. There was some question about if proof of insurance is something that's enforceable, and I don't know if that's. And I don't know if that's something. Anybody else has an opinion on other, other?
It, it, it has to be written into your local ordinance. If you look at every other ordinance that's out there, it's written into them.
Right, and I think one of the things I took away from the, um. The D N R warden that was here is, I don't want to misspeak, uh, for his behalf, but, um. You know, communities are not enacting strict conformity. It's one, something he said. I don't know how that applies to, 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 to some of these things about whether it's enforceable or not, but there is a. Well, you had. There's opportunity to have a really sort of confusing system, uh, uh, of what is, and what is allowable, what is not, what is enforceable, what is not. When you step over, when you pass by the boundaries of one municipality into the next, um, confusion of what's right, what's wrong. What's against the law?
Well, state statute twenty-three point three three spells it out very clearly on everything we've talked about. Insurance, age of riders, driver's license. Um, you had Warden Austin here from Rock County. He's the same warden that we had at our informational session at Rob's. And when I talked to him on the side, he said that he really doesn't get involved in ATV stuff too much. They pulled him out of Rock County to bring him up to Johnson Creek. But from stuff I've seen and heard, there's. Uh, there's been activity in the Janesville area of people riding illegally and stuff. We don't see that here, but. That might be some antsy people wanting to get out on the streets because I know they have an ordinance pending in Janesville. They may have passed it already. I'm not sure, but.
I know one issue that was brought up that, uh, would be of concern to many people. Was that the OWI rules are different with from, uh, having, uh, being intoxicated and driving a car. Versus being intoxicated and driving a UTV. That it might almost sound like a magnet to bring people into, this is a good way to do that. However. Are there not, to your knowledge, uh, with. Representative Nass, I believe, that, that, that the state is actively in the mo- in the movement to change those. And close those loopholes. And actually, the, what I was told sounded like they will make it tighter than what cars restrictions are.
Right, and there, there's some legislation or pending legislation out there and I'm not sure where it's at. But they want to be able to write tickets, have law enforcement write tickets. If you have an open beer can in your ATV, whether it's empty or has beer in it or an open booze bottle. So anything that would be the seal broken on it, that would be considered open and you get a ticket for that for open intoxicants.
Well, all, all the county ordinance, the city of Jefferson and others, they have the applicable three forty-six, sixty-three. OWI statute in, uh, in the ordinance, correct?
They do, but it's actually a D N R ticket versus, versus a municipal ticket. That's always been kind of degreeary with the, with the OWI.
But if it's referring to three forty-six, sixty-three, went the same statute applied to the OWI, the, uh, ATV riders, is that not your opinion?
It, it should, in my opinion, it should, but, uh, to be honest with you, we haven't faced that yet. We, we've not had one pulled over, one ticket written for OWI for open intoxicants for nothing. In fact, I don't know of any.
Based on what the state wardens are telling us, anytime it is on an ATV or UTV, even if it's on the road. In a community where they can legally drive it on the road, the officer still has to handle it as a D N R violation. Under the D N R codes, right, on D N R citations. We have to do the intoxicimeter testing under the D N R code, not under the autom- automobile, uh, UTC area either. Um, you still have the same standards, point oh eight, you still do normal field sobriety, but where we write the tickets, the amount. The violation amount and the penalty amount, and when they become criminal after the second, uh, after the second offense. It's completely different. It's not, doesn't have the same weight as a criminal. What's that?
Similar to voting.
Yes.
The D N R.
Yep.
When you do stop somebody for that, they are still, if they do blow above that limit, they are still. Able to be arrested that night and taken off the street, correct?
Yeah, you just have to do it in a different way than what we do with an.
Okay, so it's not just where some people are under the assumption that, oh, they got a DUI, but they're still allowed to drive home there.
No, we would still, we're still in our place to take action. It's just different.
Okay.
And the penalties are different.
Yeah.
And like I said, I haven't seen or heard that happening in any of the municipalities that we've been involved with. And you do have a list in that little packet I gave you of all the townships and cities and villages that we've been active in getting ordinance passed in.
How does an OWI citation on an ATV or UTV? Work in conjunction or not in conjunction with a, a, a motor vehicle, a, a car, um. Oh, OWI. I mean, they, they, so, so you could.
You could have six offenses in your car and if you were on ATV driving on the road, it'd be first offense.
And.
But there is talk in the state of changing that from what I have heard from different senators.
Attorney Westrick, can you speak to whether or not we could adopt, um, through a local ordinance? Other sections of state statutes relating to lighting equipment or child safety seats and restraints. Um, specifically sections of chapters three forty-seven, um, relating to lights, mufflers.
So three forty-seven, I know Chief, you had a question about, um, three forty-seven equipment. I think that you can do whatever three forty-seven, uh, sections that you'd like. You could add that in the statute. This is three forty-six and it says strict conformity with, um, chapter three forty-six. So if you wanted to add unclean defective lights, improper mufflers, uh, defective muffler, improper colored lights, that could certainly be added. But no brake lights though, I think the brake lights are already in three forty-six. Um, or I saw that in, um, one of the, uh.
They are in twenty-three point three three as well.
Yeah, so there, that's already in there, but I, I didn't see, like, you can't have, like, red, white and blue lights, okay? Um, but you could add that if you wanted under three.
Yeah, I, I see the, some of the stuff the warden gave us, talks about auxiliary lighting and colored lighting. Uh, but it doesn't reference if that's, it doesn't reference like what statutes that aligns to. Or if that's just under the twenty-three, so I'm a little confused on that part of it. But I think we can then adopt that.
Yes, you can.
Understand.
You had a question or three forty-seven though, as far as the child seat safety. Now, I don't know about an ATV as far as having any. The restraints at all, right? There are none, so.
A U T V has seat belts.
Okay.
ATVs are, sit on top, so they don't.
Right.
There is no requirement for child seats and my comment was, do we care? Do we, if we're, if they're, if you're drafting an ordinance, do you care if a three-year-old is in a, in a UTV? Riding on the public streets and not in a car seat, like, does that matter to you? Cause I'm pretty sure that injury is not going to be a good thing if there was an incident.
Yeah.
So I just put that in there for conversation and thought.
Well, um. It's kind of crossover like a motorcycle. Is there technically an age restriction on passengers for motorcycles?
Um, there's size restrictions. They have to be able to, uh, put their feet on the pedals.
Okay.
I think, I believe is the restriction, so there isn't an age.
Okay.
Restriction.
I believe that's accurate to have a passenger, their feet need to hit the pedals.
Okay. I'd always heard that there was something that they had to have their feet on solid surface when riding, so.
Another thing I'd like to speak to that usually comes up is. Noise from an ATV or UTV. The current state law says ninety-six decibels. Anything above that is a violation. I'm sure that's what you heard from the D N R warden.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's in, uh, that's in.
Yeah, so, I mean, that typically comes up in conversation too. Did, did, did you read the, um, Johnson Creek ordinance?
I did not read Johnson Creek. No, I didn't.
I actually liked theirs where it was short and sweet and referred to all, uh, three forty-sixes, three forty-sevens, twenty-three point three three. They referred to, to the state statutes and ordinance numbers in their, in their ordinance. Um, it, it made it like, uh, I consider it short and sweet because it, it didn't mess up the person that was going to read it. It did, it won't mess them up and confuse them going into that municipality. It spelled out very clearly. So if you get a chance, could you please look at it?
Sure.
I've got two, uh, I'm going to go back just a little bit as we talk about like the price of the machines. And the, the average age of, of a buyer, um. That may be true today, um, as, as this becomes more popular in the region. As, you know, ten years from now, there's going to be a lot of machines that have been on the road. They'll probably depreciate in value. There's going to be the second-hand market. You know, there may become a time or day when, um. You know, second-hand market for, for UTVs, uh, the price gets so low that, you know, I, I would. Younger individuals may get them, right? Um, so. My, my view on this is I want to make sure that, like, maybe some of the information that's being brought before us. Like, uh, the question on the back of my mind is, will it stand the test of time? Um, so like, uh, you know, again, um, there may be a day when the, the age comes down or the price of machines comes down. And that opens it up to a different demographic of user. Um, I'm just, just stating for fact, they're just stating, uh, that, that's a concern of mine. Um, however, my question would be is like, as we register our ve- personal vehicles, uh, you know, the, the DMV has our date of birth. And, you know, age of, um. I'm sure they could probably pull data or report saying what is the average age of a vehicle registered, you know, person registering their vehicle in the state. Uh, I'm curious if the, the DMV would have that same information for, for UTV, ATVs. Um, so to go outside of the dealer information, um, that might give us a bigger picture of, um, that.
I think we could probably get that from the D N R. I did not try to get it yesterday when I was doing a little bit more research for tonight. But, but the D N R, when you register a machine, it's kind of like a bolt. It's a two-year registration. It's. I believe it's thirty-five dollars or, or something like that, but it's two-year registration. And this, and the D N R wants you to sign up for a Go Wild card. And the Go Wild card has all your information on it all. If you get pulled over by any law enforcement, all I have to do is scan that. Then you have to look at your driver's license because it's got that number on it, your date of birth. It's got everything on the Go Wild card. And the D N R does have all that information.
The, all right, thank you. The, the last comment, I guess, um, is more for, for city staff. Um, item J says ATV, UTVs shall not operate in any public municipal property, public park. Golf course, walking trail, sidewalk, public alley. Um, it, it doesn't, does mute public municipal property? Does that include public parking lots? And, and maybe we don't have to answer that now. Uh, it's more so just a, a question of. Um, you know, we had some individuals who own a restaurant here in town and their restaurant is next to a public parking lot. Um, and they, they signed in favor of opening this up. Um, I would assume that many people. You know, visiting the restaurant, parking that public lot, that if someone were, you know, drive a ATV or UTV to the restaurant. That they would probably use that lot.
Um, I believe the way it's written in other ordinances is public parking lots can be used. But city parks and any park land type stuff, um, in a municipality cannot be driven on. Okay.
We could be more explicit in that section.
Because we, we'd certainly want, if we went forward, we'd want the ability for somebody to park in, uh, Jones. Park parking lot so that they might attend, uh, watch the generals play or baseball fest or anything like that. We wouldn't want to defeat the purpose of having a, an enjoyable family time. By telling, well, you can do it, but you're going to have to walk two blocks once you get there. I mean, but that's an issue for us on council to, uh, tweak the ordinance to a point where we're all comfortable with it. Before we move forward.
Right, that, that would have to be spelled out in your ordinance.
Uh, and then just the last comment I have is, you know, as we can discuss this, um. You know, I have, I own several bicycles and, uh, I'm down to now one motorcycle. But, uh, as we talked about like economic impacts, uh, you know, I visit towns, you know, like I take a day trip on a motorcycle. I visit towns I probably wouldn't normally visit, eat at restaurants, visit shops, stores, whatever. Um, and, you know, having a motorcycle allows me to do that. And, you know, additionally with the bicycle, the bicycle trail network that it goes all the way to Lake Mills and probably even further. You know, I've ridden to Lake Mills Cottage Grove on that trail system to just, you know, I ride there, have lunch, ride back. Um, so, uh, I do believe there is, you know, a marginal economic benefit to, to opening this up. Um, to the local restaurants, shops, stores in town. Um, that's my current belief, so thank you.
I guess one thing I want to raise, and I appreciate you, John, for being here and answering all these questions. Uh, my, my question is probably a little bit more for city staff. Um, I've had people reach out to me personally, both for and against this. Um, the one thing people have asked me is, okay, if we're going to allow these, these four-wheel vehicles to drive on our city streets. Currently Ford Atkinson has a wheel tax for everybody who has a car or a truck. I don't believe we're able to charge a wheel tax if we implement this. But is there any way to do any kind of local registration fee or sticker or anything? That would kind of make it a little more fair.
Uh, so we, so the wheel tax is collected through the, the DMV, yeah, through the state. And then they collect it at the time of your registration. So the D N R doesn't allow that, right? That doesn't allow us to assign a fee and then, then collect it and give it to us the same way that the wheel tax, um, vehicle registration fee works. Um, we could do, uh, some sort of local sticker. Um, but I, I think that would defeat the purpose of all of the people. Uh, I mean.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people coming in from, I would say, the town, uh, that surrounds the city. Uh, would it just be for residents? Would it be for anybody who wants one? I mean, we, we could always add something to the ordinance that requires that, but then we have to think about the, the enforcement on the other end. And the system that we would have to put into place and who's going to, you know, who's going to police registrations and collect funds. And then now with buying stickers and are they annual stickers? So I, I mean, that's, that gets much more involved. If that's something you want us to, to consider, we certainly can do that.
Yeah. Are any of these other thirteen, do they have any registration sticker? Any, any of the townships that you're aware of?
None, none that I'm, well, none that I'm aware of that we've been involved with. Well, and, and basically the reason for that is, is we fund the signage and repair of signs and have spare signs at. The county, you know, we're funding that, so they don't, you know, that would be a reason to have something would be to fund the signage and. Fund the repairs.
And it's, it's not like, uh, UTVs are one hundred percent tax-free because they run on gas. The major portion for road funding is gas tax. They pay that just as any other vehicle on the road. They pay gas tax that goes towards road repairs and things.
Right.
I would say the major funding of our roads is our tax dollars and our borrowing. That's how we fund roads.
These, uh, you know, I just want to make a couple of comments to that. First off, you're going to find that if you do come up with an ordinance, you're not going to have a superhighway of ATVs and UTVs riding through town. You'll see one here, one there, somebody either driving through town, coming to work from out of town. I mean, Fort Atkinson has a lot of industry. And I'm not sure what, at Jones, I'm not sure what the start times are. But there might be people that live in, you know, Jefferson or Whitewater or wherever that want to ride their machine to work. So you, you won't see a superhighway of machines once an ordinance is enacted. And, um. Well, my age is getting to me. I lost that thought, but, uh. That, that's a big thing. And the education standpoint. We would, we would be willing to do Toshkana Cruisers and Jefferson Half Mile Club. If and when the time gets there, we would do educational sessions. We would just have to find a hall big enough that. We can get a hundred, a hundred and fifty people in, whatever that number is. And, um, that's what we did in Johnson Creek and I made a world of difference because then the general public understands these machines a little bit more. And it's a mode of transportation. I mean, it's no different than driving your car, except they get fifty miles to the gallon. And it's a recreational mode of transportation.
I know I had, had an experience in Jefferson where I had gone to Waddle's hamburger stand. And there was a UTV with a man, a wife and his child, put their seatbelts on and putting their burgers in their mouth. And I thought, does that look like nice family fun?
They were driving?
No, they were parked.
Oh.
But they were getting ready to, yeah, it was like going, what a nice outing for, uh, man, woman and child to go out for a ride, go get a burger, I thought. Completely enjoyable in my mind.
Right. I would, uh, I would extend an invitation for any council member if they would like to go for a ride with our club at some point in time. Um, to see, I, I extend this invitation to every municipality and we've had some take us up, certain members. But just to get you out with. But just to get you out with a couple of club members, we do part road, part trail. To see what the sport is all about, so. You know, I'd like to extend that invitation.
I just wanted to share with others here, not a question for you, Mr. Drake. Um, a unsolicited, I got a a message from a citizen today who wanted to share his feelings. He could not be here this evening. Is not supportive of the ordinance, um, and part of it, uh, much of his argument was that, um, as far as. Tourism and the effect on the economy, that it's not supported by data. And it's something that you acknowledge as well, that there's not data out there to support it. Anecdotally, you might hear from. Some business owners that say, yes, there there is a difference, but there's no. Uh, I'm, and again, I'm just repeating what, um, this, uh, citizens shared with me. Um, that there's, uh, not supported by data, uh, uh, in communities that have put an ordinance in place and that, um. His feelings were that, uh, if this was an area that we wanted to look further at doing that, um. He would support dedicating, uh, if there were dedicated areas for. Uh, ATV and UTV use on undeveloped, undeveloped land, um, it would support that, but. For what it's worth, I wanted to share what someone shared with me who, uh, would have liked to have been here, but. Was unable to attend today.
And I'd like to add, last week Beaver Dam passed their ordinance seven to four. So Beaver Dam was the last city in Dodge County to write an ordinance and pass it to open all city streets. Currently in Jefferson County, it's Ford Atkinson and Watertown. Um, I can leave my house, I live just south of Johnson Creek. I can leave my house and I can all ride all the way to Superior, Wisconsin now. So what we're seeing or what I'm seeing is. Um, oh, a fair amount of people take weekend trips and ages venture off to the unknown, let's say. Kind of like your motorcycle trip, Eric, and you go somewhere and you don't know where you're gonna end up, but you stop and eat and gas. And so that's the kind of sport it's getting to be.
Yeah, I think for me too, it is, it's difficult to try to compare, um, our city to surrounding townships. Um, I mean, even as we heard from the. The DNR warden at the, uh, ordinance committee meeting that, you know, this traditionally, this was something that started in northern and western parts of the state. And that with the urban nature of this area closer to us, that remains to be seen where where things go from this. But I'm wondering, um, how many other communities in near our area, maybe outside of the county. That are of a similar population, twelve thousand five hundred or more, that have, um, four state highways. Running through it, um. And the amount of traffic that we have and the continued challenges that we have, um, maintaining. Roads, um. I I I'm wondering if you take all that into effect, is is it fair to compare what works for surrounding townships? Um, to what might work or might not work for our community?
Well, I would compare it to Whitewater, to Beaver Dam. Um, we're currently working with Watertown. Unfortunately, the April election, the. Safety coordinator in Watertown got voted out and so we're starting all over again in Watertown. Um, but I would say Beaver Dam's a population of just a shade less than twelve thousand and what's four fourteen thousand. So it's pretty comparable. And they have, uh, Highway thirty three goes through Beaver Dam. I'm not sure if there's another state highway, but. Um, going through town, it's thirty five miles an hour or less. So ATVs and UTVs can ride on the state highways going through Beaver Dam. And what what you'll find, um, is you're gonna find that these ATVs and UTVs are gonna be just like a car in in a lane of traffic. Brake lights will be on, turn signals, arms out the window or arm off the handlebar, um. They're they're not much different than riding a motorcycle, except they're four wheels.
And and it's correct, uh, we inside the town under thirty five miles an hour, the city can authorize that to happen. But outside the town, you're not gonna get on Highway twelve and go to Madison. That's not gonna happen.
No, where the where the city limit ends, there's gotta be an end ATV route sign there. The state is very specific on signage. Um, and coming into a town that's a state highway, the signs have to be three foot by three foot and on a six foot post. So they're very visible that that community is open on that's route, that state highway.
I think one thing I'm happy to see in in, uh, the proposed draft for, uh, this ordinance is the the sunset. So I think for some individuals that maybe. Uh, not favorable to opening the city streets to ATVs and UTVs, um. If we do see, you know, significant negative impacts, uh, it does have a pretty, you know, a way to. Not extend it or back off, which I think I'd like to see more government have stuff like this. Where this isn't committing that us to this forever that we get to try it. We get to prove ourselves as responsible ATV, UTV, you know, drivers in in the city. And if if it has a negative, there was a lot of, uh. Assumptions I had, you know, several months ago until I started meeting and talking and learning more about it. And and now those assumptions I have are are mostly gone, so, um, I'm, I think that's something that we can. Communicate to the public is that, you know, it's, we're we're trying it and the sunset allows us to to. Back out of it if if there's a lot of, you know, negative, um, not that I don't assume or I assume that's not gonna happen based on what I've heard so far. But, um, I think it.
Most, most.
Great thing to have that sunset in the ordinance right now.
Most communities do a six month and then they'll renew it for six months again after they sit down at their council meeting or board meeting or whatever. Review if there's anything that, any issues. And they'll either renew it for six months or they'll say, no, we're gonna take the sunset clause out. We haven't had any issues. And if we do, we'll just review it when we have issues. And I believe in all ordinances that you folks got copies of. It does specifically state sunset clauses in every one of them. I know Jefferson, they made a six month in October last year while I went into winter. So they extended it for six months to get through the summer months and that'll be coming up September sometime or October.
One one question I have, one of my biggest concerns with, I'm not, I'm not against the concept. Be ATVs or UTVs necessarily driving on streets and. Um, but I am not an owner myself, but one, one, one of the concerns I've had is with the the. Insurance and I understand that the the ordinance as drafted does say that the operator will have to have proof of liability insurance. My question is if they don't have insurance, is there any sort of penalty tied to it or is it just kind of a write up and you have to go get it?
Same as an automobile, right, chief? You get a ticket for not providing proof of insurance?
That's why in the. That original draft, I indicated we need to have proof of insurance, but also have insurance. You could have insurance but no proof. Um, and they're two different violations, so. Not having your insurance card with you is a violation and then also not having insurance at all is a different violation.
And just so you know, every club that I'm aware of, when I, when our member fills out the renewal form or an application to become a new member. We require a certificate, well, we require a copy of their insurance card so that we know as a club that they have insurance on their machines.
I, most of you know what I do for a living. I run a body shop. I constantly, constantly see people with cars. And the person they were involved with had no insurance. It's not kind of exclusive to, wow, I've got an ATV, I don't have to insure it. If the rules are saying you're gonna insure it, you should be and you should be held accountable for it. But it is rampant in the in the automotive market that it's not happening. So, um, to simply pick on them and say. This is, this, I, we should stop this idea because, uh, we have an insurance issue. I think as long as we have the issue in the ordinance that they must have it. And then they could pay the penalty, whatever it is, if they don't have it.
And how much is insurance on average for a UTV?
Well, we, my wife and I have a twenty nineteen Polaris Ranger. Um, like I alluded earlier, I paid about thirty thousand for it and I just got our renewal, which renews October fourth. And our insurance is two hundred and ninety eight dollars a year. I mean, I don't have to have full coverage, but I have full coverage. I have underinsured motorists, uninsured motorists. Have that on all of our vehicles, so I keep everything cross line. So it's about three hundred bucks a year for our machine. Now, every machine's gonna be different based on what the person that ensures it wants, you know, if they want just liability, which. Is covered is is the law, you know, I don't have to have collision and all the other stuff, but.
Thank you.
Are we close to being satisfied with tonight?
Well, I haven't gotten any direction on the actual ordinance, the draft ordinance that is, that was in the in the packet. So I mean, I think it's, it's about six minutes until the the council meeting starts. So I guess from the staff perspective, uh, if if there's specific things you want to see changed in that draft. Or if there's, if we want, uh, the council wants another workshop to discuss the actual ordinance. Um, you know, I guess I I'm looking for direction from the council on on how to, how to proceed.
Does it proceed that if we, uh, move forward and create an ordinance that we're, we, as it goes through the system. We would be tweaking it to an ordinance that we all approved, correct?
Uh, that that could be, but we need a first reading of something when it does go, when, you know, when it would go to the council for for action.
My biggest concern is section G with the timeframe. I think we should mimic more of the county ordinance. That way it kind of falls in line with all the other jurisdictions too, to be the five AM to ten PM allowed times. Only because of the nine AM to dusk. Is, as I've talked to a lot of people, dusk is very broad area to some people. My definition of dusk may be different than Chief Bumps or someone else's. So by giving that hard, this time to this time, it gives a. There's no gray area for law enforcement.
I agree with Kyle that we ought to be seeking out, you, uh. Being similar enough to all of the other ordinances that are out there. So that it's not simply a matter of looking at your wristwatch or knowing what dusk is today cuz it's a different time tomorrow. Um, that we're uniform with all of them, that would, I, in my mind, that would create a scenario with less. Incidences that, uh, Mr. Bump would have to deal with.
But to that point though, I haven't heard with one hundred percent certainty that there is uniformity in all the surrounding municipalities. Right, there is, there are differences.
They're very close. Jefferson, Jefferson, Jefferson will be going from eight AM to five to five AM at their next. When the sunset, six month sunset is up, I've already talked to Chief Richter. That'll be changed. Um, and quite honestly, five AM to ten PM, there's some municipalities that go to eleven PM. But people that are out riding have to know where they're going through and what time it ends. Um, the big thing I would say is the five AM, when you have workers that want to ride into, you know, say if they're at W and A or if they're at, uh. Jones or wherever they're at, they want, might want to ride their machine to to work if they ride in early. Um, that that would be it, but yes, there are some differences, but they're not, not many.
And I I would, to address that issue, I would agree that they're not identical. But they're similar and what we have in the moment in front of us is a little outside the box on that issue. It's not similar. It would only cause confusion.
Well, and I think it would be more enforcement for the chief and his department on that nine AM to dusk. Because people would be more confused about the ending like Kyle alluded to.
But I also, to be fair, and at the risk of putting words in the police chief's mouth, I think he's made it very clear of. Whether he's for or against authorizing ATV, UTV use on our streets.
I know it it came up too in, uh, staff discussion about schools, right? Um, I got two kids in the high school and those kids already drive like maniacs and large vehicles. So, you know, that's, I think, something to to think about and maybe understand what the experience has been at other places with, uh, riding these things to the high schools.
That falls under the educational part of it. Um, you can write in your ordinance that anybody sixteen to eighteen years old must take a DNR safety course. We have two certified instructors in our club that, um, instruct the the safety courses. I don't know if, uh, Cruisers does or not, but I know we do. So I, we're, we're very up on the safety aspect of it.
Well, I don't know if it's provided any further direction, but I know there are some things that have been talked about, adding additional. Elements to wh- where we have. I don't know that I'm in a position yet to say whether I'm for or against this. It's just if we're going to continue to discuss it, I would put in some of the things that have been talked about. And I'm sure I haven't captured everything, one of them, but, um. As a good start to a discussion, but it's certainly not yet a thumbs up or down matter for me.
I I I would like to go back to my earlier comment and maybe the city manager, whoever can form. An ad hoc committee to write the ordinance, people from law enforcement, from city engineer. Someone from the council, someone from the ATV club, so we could get together and meet and hash out an ordinance and then have something to present. That's what we did in Jefferson. We had three meetings that worked extremely well and I was at the request of the mayor.
Right, we've drafted an ordinance that's in the packet, that was in the packet for.
I I have a copy of it.
I think that's pretty well rounded, like we said, just with a few adjustments.
Yeah, can I just say, cuz I know that the city manager and staff are looking for direction here. I've, I'm not completely sold on this yet. I still have some concerns, but I do appreciate. That the drafted ordinance at least attempts to to address some of the the safety concerns that that I and others have had. Um, I like the concept of of reviewing the data every six months. And then putting in the two year provision where it's either gonna sunset or the city council at that time can decide. This is working great. We want to continue it if they, it was so choose. I I think we could, we could keep having meeting after meeting and just rehashing this. Um, if we decide to move forward, would this go back to ordinance committee or?
I I wouldn't foresee it going back to ordinance committee because the whole ordinance committee is here at this workshop. Um, plus the rest of the council, so, uh, I mean, I I don't think ordinance. I mean, I mean, I think the the council can do another workshop if you'd like to specifically, you know, talk about each, uh, section of the ordinance. Uh, or, um, I mean, I I don't, I don't have clear direction or clear consensus as to which things you want me to add and change. Uh, to the draft that's here, uh, and maybe, maybe another workshop where the council actually. Uh, considers these sections and provides clear direction, uh, would be, would be the way to go unless. Uh, unless you would want staff to just bring back, uh, another draft or, um, for review at a, at a first reading situation.
Yeah, I I would like to see this issue go forward in and what path that takes. If that means we have another meeting, fine. If it does, if we if we're gonna cre- create an ordinance and then adjust that ordinance, that's, we've got several meetings. To adjust the ordinance, do we not?
We have three readings.
Three readings and we can adjust it all along the path saying, this item we need to change. We need to expand. Cuz again, what we've got in front of us is not anywhere as near similar to the other communities on timelines and things. I think we should get there. And whether we do that. Uh, in one of our fir-, in our readings or whether we do it in advance, I'm not, I don't care, but I'd like to see this go forward.
I still think there's a few things that we need to learn about, uh, statutes that we can adopt. In there, we threw out some really strong safety concern questions. Um, that we don't know how that, how we can adopt it in the ordinance without a few more. Um, bits of information through our city attorney. Um, and other professionals in the area in the field. Um, I provided a list of concerns I have, uh, to the city manager after the ordinance was passed. Because there was just a few things that I'm still concerned about with, um, related to children and safety. Related to certain statutes under three forty seven and how we adopt that into there that I think need to be in there. Um, and I think if you, I think there needs to be a little bit more time. Um, if you're gonna put an ordinance out there and just quick adopt it, I think you're gonna regret it. I think you need to have a better, well-rounded ordinance, unlike these other communities that just quick drafted something and passed it. Cuz I think there could be an opportunity in the future where something bad could happen. And we're all gonna sit back and say, I wish you would have thought of that, or I wish we wanted to rush through that. I wish we would have asked a few more questions just to make sure.
I I would be open to, you know, one, one more work session that'll give more time to to adjust, learn more. Um, tweak, tweak the the draft that we have.
I I could get on board with that motion so that we could, uh, take what we've got and. take what we've got and tweak it so that we can all be in agreeance on what we're doing and that more concerns are all addressed. We'll never address all of the concerns for all people at all places, but I would like to see that we created a more feasible than what I see in front of us now. I don't say, see, it needs to be amended anyways to start with. So if we do that through a workshop, I'm fine with that.
The council in general agreement for a, an additional workshop?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right. Go ahead and adjourn, so we can start our next meeting.
Thank you very much for having me speak.
Thank you.
Motion adjourn, second.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We take five.